Hey folks, we're gonna go ahead and bring our July 13th regular board meeting. Congrats for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna take a roll call when you're ready, Chris.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Jerome.
Here.
Here.
Trustee Kenny.
Present.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Knutson.
Here.
Mayor Hammond.
Here.
Is there any amendments to the agenda we need to be aware of? Nope. Any conflicts of interest we need to bring up? Okay. Move on to item B, this community participation. This is a time the public wishes to comment, individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items tonight. We ask that come up to the podium. Once called the pump, please come up and state your name and address. We'll give you three minutes or so. And hear what you have to say. So open up to the public at this point. If anyone wants to come up, now's a good time.
My name's Tim Singwald. I am Wellington's representative on the Box Elder Stormwater Authority. The Box Elder Stormwater Authority project was completed in 2017 was our final agreement to kick in another $285,000 to finish the project. At that point in time, starting in 2018, the Eastside Detention Facility is maintained by Tim Nath, Laramo County, and Fort Collins. Clark Reservoir is 50% Wellington, 25% Fort Collins, and 25% Laramo County. Right now, there's a project going on to de-water the Eastside Detention Facility. And I object at all the meetings that this should be done by the entities down there for the maintenance, Tim Nath, Fort Collins, and Laramo County. The vote goes forward, and just like in the old days, they vote us through, and it is being done by the Box Elder Stormwater Authority. My concern is the court case that was settled with the Daze, and a couple of you were here when John Day came and spoke. He's very upset that they took his land, his five-generation property from his family. We were told that they would never get more than $385,000 out of Box Elder. It ended up to be $1,875,000, something like that. We had bad legal advice from the best attorney in Denver on the issue. After that, he retired from working for the Box Elder, and it was gone. He didn't give us any pro bono to pay us back or anything. I thought that was kind of bad. But we are in a situation now where the Box Elder Stormwater Authority is going to do a de-watering program. If that goes forward, and it isn't one of the maintenance entity, that puts Wellington on the hook for liability. And I'll let Richard get up and talk about water because he's the water expert. Richard Seaworth has been president of the Underground Water Association in Northern Colorado. He's been in water his whole life up here. And he can tell you what the Daze can do. The court case, we were told, was a final deal. Someone else told me it wasn't. I went and got the court decree. Any further damage to the Daze wells will be paid for by those who do it. And if they bring a lawsuit, it is the Box Elder Stormwater's authority to pay his attorney's fees. By Box Elder Stormwater Authority doing the work, that puts Wellington in a legal position where they are on the hook for the damages. And the damages could be as high as $12 to $15 million. Wellington is now more than 50% of the Box Elder. We contribute, I think, about 60% now, where we were a lot smaller. If we get a $12 million lawsuit against us, and it's settled, if you don't do anything in the next few days, you're gonna set Wellington up for liability. And I'll turn it over to Richard for his three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Richard Seaworth, 4283 White Deer Lane. What Tim has said is true. What the town needs to do is this agreement that held us to only $280,000 worth of liability for the town, which, by the way, it's over $2-point-some-million now. So the town has saved about almost $2 million because of what Tim did. So we need to make sure that that stays. But that was done by an agreement between the entities outside of the Box Elder Flood Authority Board. And there's supposed to be an auditing committee that meets every year. Well, they haven't met for two and a half years. So we need to make sure that that happens in the next few days. I did sign the contract today to do the monitoring of the wells. So we're not gonna do any digging until at least January. But we're running way behind, and I don't know why. Well, I know why we're behind because Pinnacle, our management team is very poorly ran. And we're having an awful time with that. Our engineer is getting ready to quit us because they've dissolved their company in Fort Collins, and so he's leaving. Now we're gonna have issues trying to find another engineer. So this thing is very, very irritating and very tough. And by the way, I represent Wellington and Laramo County as a joint. So Laramo County is adamant that they want to get this over and done. The mayor's been adamant, town administrator's been adamant, they want this over and done. So I would really appreciate it if you would push to get this auditing committee together and say, now, look, we're not gonna owe anything. I think I've got Eric Tracy from Laramo County to vote with us that we're not gonna get into a lawsuit with the Daze, even if we have to buy augmentation water to take care of that, because it's just not worth that kind of a fight. Because those wells they have are adjudicated for a little over 300 acre feet. And all we need is 30. So we don't want to get caught in a lawsuit with them where we'd have to come up with 300 acre feet, because I don't even know where we'd find it. So if you have any questions, be glad to answer them.
Why are we hearing about this at, not through the town administrator directly, but straight to the board at sort of a?
Well, to be honest, this only came up Friday. So this hasn't been something that we've known. We've known we had a problem. But we thought they were gonna get this taken care of. We were gonna get our our monitoring done so we'd have a better footing, and that the Daze were gonna okay what we wanted to do. And it just hasn't happened. It was supposed to have happened a month ago. And then I got an email on Friday night that, well, I needed to sign this because somehow they forgot to send it out, which is just nothing but crap, in my opinion. So, but that's where we are. But we certainly do need the town to get with the other entities and make sure the other entities understand what our agreement is. And Tim has asked, what, two months ago, to be at that meeting, and it just doesn't happen. And that's something we really need to make happen. And the town administrators kind of tried to make it happen, but if these other people don't want to talk to her, then I don't know where we're at. So I'm thinking the mayor's gonna need to get involved.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's pick it back up. That's a big topic to talk about here tonight on the fly, you know, so we gotta sit down.
Oh, we did have a meeting with your town administrator and attorney, and we were looking for some direction on that. We haven't gotten any direction so far. I'm sure they're probably gonna talk to you about it. But the legal situation of them going forward with projects in the name of Box Elder has me terrified. That should be the Eastside Detention Facility Maintenance Group. We shouldn't be in it at all by name.
Right, I agree.
Just a side note, I read the judge's, whatever you call it, when they make ruling, and it specifically states in there that the Daze can come back again and again and again. That wasn't a final ruling. It was just that particular case. So if they decide to come back again, I mean, they're correct. Where if the Box Elder keeps on doing stuff and the Daze don't like it, and they decide to go back to court, once again, Wellington will be forced to pay the front of any fees as part of our agreement as being part of the Box Elders. Am I correct?
Yes. Just to give you a little bit of background, we hit groundwater where we were told we would not hit groundwater by our engineers, and we did get heirs to come back and give us some money back, or enough, but they refunded a pretty sizable chunk of money because they realized they had been an error. So now we have to be careful, because once you hit groundwater, you have broken the law. Just like your deal down there on the south end of Wellington. I mean, you're lucky to be out of that deal. Yeah, real lucky, I'm telling you. So, but if you know the CSU and the Bee Farm, and there's one other one down there, their wells were very well affected when that happened. They went dry for like several years. And that's what we want to make sure we don't do to the Daze, because if we do, we're gonna have to replace that. And that is an extremely expensive deal. And how the town stayed out of a lawsuit there, yo Brad Marcha, little round of applause for that, I'll tell you. Because it's something we don't want to get into. And for those of you who aren't aware, the original Box Elder project, the original book was for $13 million. We've already passed $31 million, so we're 17 million over and about five years behind. So this thing just keeps going from bad to worse, and we need to get it ended as soon as possible.
Okay.
I've talked with Brad March. This is Dan Sapienza.
Thank you for bringing it up. Anyone else?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Brian Erlich, I'm with B-Lake Productions, and we do your fireworks show every year. And I just wanted to come up and give you guys a real thank you, real quick recap of how the show went this year. And so I put together a little report thing. And so we, we know we're all a very, very good show, probably the best firing we've ever had. We only had four misfires out of over 690 queues. We contracted for 2,784 total effects, and we shot 2914 because I used to get new stuff after I've already contracted. I like to try. So I just added all that stuff in to see what it looked like. I thought it looked pretty good. So it did real well. Lot of, lot of well-received comments from all the spectators. I'm not sure which of you guys got to go out and see it. I hope you all did. It went off really well, and anybody here that got to see the show, so. Had a couple of people say, one said, it goes better than DC. He goes, I've been there. And he goes, you guys are doing something special here. So we did have Sixth Street closed from Wilson to Grant, and that worked well. We didn't have any complaints from citizens, although we noticed a lot of people driving around the barricades and moving the barricades. So next year, we may want to weight those down or something to keep people from driving around and driving through. We did have people park along Sixth Street, which we didn't, we were thinking about not having that happen, but it didn't cause any problems. Planned for 2022, there is still a considerable shortage of fireworks and getting stuff out of China. And I've had two suppliers contact me just in the last week and are asking for a commitment for 2022. They'd like to have that by the end of July. I told them I didn't think we could do that. I don't know. So they are working with me on that. I did talk to them again today. And they said that if we do pay the deposit of $15,000 for the fireworks for 2022, which is more than Wellington, I do other shows, so that's not your your part of it by any means, but the total deposit would be 15. That if we decided that we didn't need that much, that they would just give us a credit that we could use up later on. So that kind of took a little pressure off, because I thought we might lose the deposit. But it doesn't sound like we'll lose that deposit. So they'll give us a credit that it won't be at the early order pricing. It'll be at a little bit higher pricing, but that's it's not an issue, because we have never ordered this early before. We've never taken advantage of that real early pricing anyway. The shortage, the reason I really considered doing this is because the shortage did raise prices about 40% from 2019 prices. So we do have a pretty serious increase in product. Whether that'll come down or not, I don't know. But it, when we start getting back to normal shipping, shipping out of more than two ports, you know, getting people in the docks to handle containers and things like that, but the cost of a container went up from $3200 to $21,000 this year. So it's very expensive. These costs are pushing and starting to bleed through to the end market, and we're trying to figure out ways to save as much as we possibly can. And so the town doesn't get affected by much. But anyway, that's what I wanted to report. We had close to 400, maybe a little over 400 likes, shares, comments, posts on Facebook. And I actually did a search through Northern Colorado, and I found 14. All of Northern Colorado fireworks shows, I found 14 posts with likes and shares. So the Fort Collins level thing, probably really limited is Tempe, Simath. People saw fireworks, posted about it. We posted about it a long time. We liked them. So anyway, that's what we do. So if you want to see the thing, I can just give you.
Yeah.
Thanks again. It was a great show. You did a great job. I love reading it. I know some titles.
Mr. Look, you, we have had the blessing of having a local fireworks vendor do this spectacular show for how many years? I mean, at least.
As long as I've flipped here, almost 10.
Seven, I think. I think it was about seven years. I was trying to count. So.
Just on average, what do you think the annual cost is for that contract? I don't remember off the top of my head.
This year's, we had a little bit of a decrease. We were like 106, 8.
Right. It was weird because, you know, there was a year of COVID.
Right, right. So we had, we were able to purchase last year at 19 prices, and I had some leftover stock from that, so we were able to keep that where the new stuff was higher. But I was able to be able to control that price a little bit. We also paid off the equipment. And so that price isn't nearly as much.
Hiring equipment.
The orders and the electronics and stuff like that, because most of this stuff I just pass through. I don't mark that up. So it's, it's, you know, the cost of the of the sound went up over $1,000 this year. The video screen went up about $500. Insurance went up $1,000. And then the increases that we were able to save from last year offset all that. So we were able to stay even actually a little lower. Next year, depending on what we do and how we buy and everything like that, I think we'll see throw a number up, maybe $1,500 increase? I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think the glory of our fireworks show is that we always try to achieve bigger and better in some way.
Right, right.
So I'm just trying to get an idea of what we spend generally on our contract, the last couple that you can remember, and then so we can kind of gauge what a 40% increase is gonna look like.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we're gonna see the whole, the 40% increases on shipping. And so from China. And so that gets diluted through the number of products that are on a container. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff in the container. Okay, so it's not like we're gonna see a 40% increase on fireworks. 40%, the, the cost of the fireworks is probably six times as much as the shipping. So the shipping went up 40%. That means you're gonna have, what, an 8, 10% increase, maybe? On product? So, I mean, the problem is, I really can't put my arms around it, and I won't be able to until we start seeing the product hit the shore in November, December. And that's when we'll really know what the costs are. But we are able to lock in on the product costs now really low, and I'm considering that. I've got a couple of guys that invest with us, so we'll see what happens. But I just think it's, it's, you know, until, until we get through this, where we are seeing a lot of upward price pressure on, on product. Now, good news is, is equipment, material, mortars, late, that's all paid. I don't think we'll see insurance increases for a few more years. It's been six years flat, and then we had one increase. So I think we'll go that way for a long time. I don't think we'll see, it's just product. And product isn't, you know, it's about, it's a little more than third of the contract. But that's not the whole contract.
Okay. Sorry to take you over your time.
Oh, that's fine.
For entertaining the questions.
That's fine. I just, I want to make sure everybody understands. So, okay? Great. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public portion of the meeting for non-agenda items. All right, we'll move on to our next item. And our next item is. Thank you, Mr. Singwald. We'll be in touch. Our next item, yes, go ahead.
Can we actually make sure trustee Gator and Dan can, we can hear them on our end?
I can see him.
You can see him. We're having some audio issues and.
We gotta have Dan on there, too.
I'm here. Can you guys hear me? You guys are really quiet.
They can hear each other.
Can you hear me? I can hear you, John.
I can hear Dan. Can you guys hear us?
I can hear John.
Apparently Dan and I can hear each other, but I don't know if you guys can hear us.
Doesn't seem that way.
All right, we'll see if we get it figured out.
Hopefully.
Testing, one, two, three.
Hey, Dan.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, all right. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Move on. All right, next item, we have a proclamation. You know I like these. And the proclamation this month is a Park and Recs proclamation, and Park and Recreation Month is what it's called, July 2021. And whereas the recreation programs are an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including Wellington, Colorado, our parks and recreation are vitally important to the establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all of our citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities and aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services, and for those who are mentally or physically disabled, challenged, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Recreate outdoors. Whereas the House, the United States House of Representatives has designated July as a Parks and Recreation Month, therefore be resolved by the Wellington Board of Trustees that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in the town of Wellington, Colorado, dated this day, July 13th, 2021. Thanks. Okay. Item C, consent agenda. Minutes of the June 22, 2021 Board of Meeting Minutes. Is there any issue with our consent agenda? And if there's not, can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the consent agenda includes the minutes from the June 22nd, 2021 Board of Trustees meeting.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny. Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes.
Okay, one item, action items. D1. Wellington Senior Resource Center is the contract renewal, and I think we're gonna get a presentation by Jenny Jones, Executive Assistant. How are you?
Hello, I'm well.
Good.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Jones, and I am the recently appointed senior center liaison. I'm joined by Dorothy McClure. She is currently the senior director. Up tonight, we've got the annual contract review. It's the standard contract we've typically used in previous years. And we did add one little provision there on 2J, just for our side of the town to facilitate the volunteer driver selection. That just increases security with our seniors. So as you can see in the exhibit A I provided, the rough annual estimated support cost that the town will be contributing to the senior center is that $28,667. That actually does include the coverage for their new van that they just got fully funded. I'll let her touch on that a little bit. We're gonna keep the old van in our current fleet, just so if we need it for plant tours, maybe some Fourth of July activities, Christmas and such, town could potentially have access to that as well. So I'll let Dorothy talk a little bit.
Thank you. I'm Dorothy McClure. I'm the Director of the Wellington Senior Center. The center would like to thank the town of Wellington for your support for the area's senior population by providing the 15-passenger bus and the facilities at 3,800 Wilson Avenue. The Wellington Senior Resource Center is staffed by volunteers on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 8:00 AM till around 1:00 PM. During 2019, our volunteers logged 2,132 volunteer hours. Volunteers of America delivers a catered lunch at 11:45 for a suggested donation of $250, which is forwarded to the Volunteers of America's office in Fort Collins. During 2019, we served 3,355 meals at the center, and 260 frozen and hot meals were delivered by the senior bus to six different homebound seniors under the VOA's Meals on Wheels program. The Wellington Senior Bus is also used to transport seniors to and from medical-related appointments in Fort Collins to bring seniors who cannot transport themselves to the center for meals and social events. In 2019, we provided 1,767 rides to 23 different seniors. Our senior center membership fee is $15 per person per year. Our paid membership in 2015 was 79 senior members, of which 68 were repeat memberships and 11 were new members. The Wellington Senior Center, in addition to serving lunch to any senior, provides social opportunities to the senior committee, community. We offer Tai Chi exercise for balance on Monday mornings, taught by Gail Wagner, for a fee of $5 for a one-hour class. The first Friday of the month, the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, and town administrators meet with our seniors for an informative question and answer session. On Mondays, we gather after lunch to play cards. Last Wednesday of the month, we play bingo after lunch. The center offers free blood pressure checks the first Wednesday of each month, compliments of the Wellington Fire Department. Massage therapy is also available once a month by Lynette Henning for a fee. Every Wednesday, the center has live music provided by a six-piece band called the Four Star Band from 10:30 till about 11:45. They have provided this entertainment for the past 14 years. We also bring in outside speakers for senior-related topics to help keep us informed. The senior center bus also provides transportation to senior center members for outings on Tuesdays and Thursdays. The center tries to schedule three outings a month. The outings in 2019 included visits to the Lorenz Ranch in Wyoming, genealogy research at the Cheyenne Library, dinner at the Terry Bison Ranch, trip to IKEA in Denver, the Forks Restaurant for lunch, the Butterfly Pavilion in Westminster, followed by lunch at the Old Spaghetti Factory, a tour of the Beach Chinchilla Opera Station in Fort Collins, visit to a flea market in Laramie, a lunch visit at the Alt Senior Center, luncheon show at Casa Bonita in Denver, luncheon shopping in Estes Park, and tour of the Laramo County Food Bank in Loveland, followed by breakfast. Lunch show at the Candlelight Dinner Theater, Dinner Playhouse Theater in Johnstown, as well as numerous outings for lunch or breakfast in Fort Collins and surrounding area. Several potluck picnics at Gateway Park up the canyon. Several potluck picnics at Gateway Park up the canyon. We hold two fundraisers a year, one in the spring in connection with the Townwide Yard Sale Event, and one in December. And net profit from our fundraising events in 2015 were $2,096, 2016, $1,611, 2017, $1,527, and 2018, $1,759, and in 2019, $1,813. These funds, along with annual dues, go towards bus driver salary for member outing, band lunches, flowers for members, surgeries and funerals, telephone bill, background checks for volunteers, supplies and snacks for the center. Larama County Office on Aging has given the Senior Center grant monies each year to be used for the benefit of seniors. These funds provide some of the food for picnics, outings, shows, and lunches, cake for birthday celebrations, common room cookies and snacks. Our senior center members also support the town of Wellington's Easter egg hunt and Fourth of July events. I have repeated my January 2020 report for 2019 activities for the benefit of any new town board members who might not be familiar with the Wellington Senior Center, and the fact that the center was closed for 12 months due to COVID restrictions. And there wasn't any outings or get-togethers during that time. The senior bus did provide medical transportation services three days a week while we were shut down. Volunteers of America has not started providing hot meals yet, however, seniors are meeting on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays to visit, play cards, play dominoes, and on Wednesday, listen to the band and share snacks and coffee. We also had a couple of lunch potlucks and purchased a 36-box lunches for our seniors from the local Taco Bell to celebrate Signal de Mayo. During the shutdown, I researched several grant opportunities and applied for, and was awarded a 100% funding to purchase a new 2021 15-passenger bus for the senior center. The old 2010 bus will be kept as a backup vehicle. The new bus should be delivered soon. In closing, we want to thank you for your support of the senior center in the past and hope you see fit to continue supporting us in the future. The Wellington Senior Center provides vital support to the area's seniors by providing a gathering place to share a healthy meal with friends, a friendly place to obtain useful information regarding senior issues, stimulating and fun educational outings. Any questions that I might answer or comments?
Questions for this lady, both of them?
I don't have a question, but I just want to take my hat off to everything that you do. It's a long list of stuff, and I'm sure that all the seniors that are members appreciate it. I know I personally appreciate the work that you're doing with our seniors because.
Thank you.
They deserve it, and you deserve, you know, all the good things, so I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I want to second that as well and say congratulations on the grant. Very exciting.
That was exciting.
That's amazing.
We really needed it, it was time.
Yeah, thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So for the town of Wellington Staff Recommendation, along with Dorothy, we moved to renew the contract between the senior center along with the town of Wellington. That contract will run, it'll be effective today, July 13th, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Okay, we'll turn it over to the public for a moment.
Sounds good.
So any public would like to comment on how much good work the senior center is doing? We'll bring it back to the board. Hearing no further comments, I'd like to seek a motion to approve the contract renewal.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract renewal with the Wellington Senior Center.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Thank you, ladies, we'll be down soon to visit, okay? Now that we're open, like it, all right. Move on to item two. Now, this is a resolution number 18-2021. It's a resolution approving the participation in the Denver, well, I see, I don't know why, so I get me cruised up, it's Metro DPA program. And Scott Riffel, the Managing Director of Stiefel Public Finance is going to talk about it. I don't think that DPA actually is the, I mean, it's titled something different, isn't it?
Metro DPA, that's correct.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, Mayor, Trustees, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Scott Riffel, I'm the Managing Director at Stiefel, and we are the Program Administrator for the Metro DPA program. And I'll try to be brief, that was a hard act to follow with the Senior Center, for sure. So if you could go to the next slide. You may ask what Metro DPA is. It's simply a down payment assistance program that helps people who qualify for a mortgage, FHA, VA, USDA, or a conventional loan, provides them down payment so that they can get into a home. It's just that simple. It's a 30-year fixed-rate mortgage. We offer very low rates. In fact, oftentimes during the pandemic, it's been under 3% for a 30-year fixed-rate loan. We only assist those that qualify for a mortgage under normal circumstances. So if you can apply for a mortgage and qualify, this program provides the down payment. You have to have a credit score of 620 or higher. If you have an income of $150,000 or less, and you are purchasing a home in a jurisdiction that is participating in the program, then you can go ahead and make qualification or make application for the loan. On this slide that you're seeing right here, these are the jurisdictions that have currently decided to participate in the program. And as you know, as you can see there, it's quite extensive, including some of your neighbors.
We're not on there.
Well, that's the hope. That's the hope, yeah. That's the hope, for sure. What we try to do, and you may ask, well, why does this need to be approved? The City and County of Denver is the authorizing entity for this program. And this is true government collaboration, which is, makes it exciting for me. Since I've been at this quite a long time, it's nice to see governments get together and work together to address, to address some of the affordable housing concerns that are in the community. But their council has deemed that we have to have an approving resolution and a board meeting to approve it for us to be able to offer these programs in your jurisdiction. And you may have received some citizen requests or borrow requests in the past. That's primarily why I show up, is that typically we don't solicit it. It's something that someone asks us to do because they want to move into the community. And you may be curious, well, what types of folks, you know, anybody that can qualify, gets a mortgage in this program? So what we typically see is teachers, firemen, police officers, folks that have good jobs that want to put down roots. And in America, unfortunately, sometimes they don't have the down payment, particularly in an environment where prices are escalating like they are in the metroplex. Obviously, you see quite the movement of people out of the metroplex of Denver wanting to work in Denver or live somewhere in Colorado. I also run the program that's similar in Wyoming. And so we're seeing this all across, you know, good places to live. People want, have a program like this so that they can put down roots. Next slide. So that's basically why we're doing this. We do utilize local realtors, local lenders. Anyone that can originate a loan is welcome to do that. I was kind, nice enough to talk to a Realtor in the audience. Any Realtor can go ahead and get their borrower involved in this program. Everyone is welcome. I think that's about it there, I want to be sensitive to your time.
Oh, we appreciate that, but hey, this is a good program. I'm, I'm, I'm really pleased to hear about it. A lot of young people probably take advantage of this, don't you see?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a fun thing to be a part of. We do this in Nevada, Arizona, Texas, Wyoming, Kansas, and it's very meaningful. People do need a down payment sometimes. And sometimes it's the difference in bringing teachers into your community or bringing police officers into your community, and it's just that simple. And so it's nice to be a part of that. This last slide here talks a little bit about the fact this program did 80 million in loans last month, which gives you a little, just a little taste as to how significant of a benefit to the community it is. 1,500 households have been helped, and particularly during COVID. The rates were so low during COVID, I could just see how much it was helpful to people, because when the rates are low, people can qualify. And then when they have the down payment, it gets them into a home, which is very meaningful. So for me, anyway, it's, it's, it's quite, quite an honor to work on the program. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I think it just hit me with whatever you need to know, because I'm happy to, happy to talk about it.
Any, any quick questions, Ms. Mayor? Because there's probably a lot of questions that person's going to have to go through, I think, but anything? All right.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
I'll be in touch.
Okay, I look forward to it. Thank you.
I got a married.
Yeah.
Little kids that just got married.
Yeah, bring them on.
All right, thank you very much. Public comment on this issue?
Mayor, I had some questions.
Oh, you do?
Yep, sorry, I couldn't hear you guys.
See you over there. Let's, let's hear it.
Okay, so the first. Yeah, the first question that I had is, I know it talks about there in the documentation that basically we are giving authority to Denver to operate within the program area. What does that authority entail?
The, well, it's a very good question. The City and County of Denver cannot operate within your jurisdiction, any program. Their council has come up with this resolution, non-binding, no financial risk whatsoever on the town. Just allows lenders who can serve borrowers in your community access to real estate transactions and so forth in your town. That, clear.
So it does not give their, them as a government entity, any authority to operate within our town?
Correct, this is the Metro DPA program, and that would be, it's very exclusive to that, right? That program can only operate within your jurisdiction based on the resolution.
Excellent, and then with this program, does this actually go out and hurt private businesses that are involved in lending?
No, actually, our goal is to try to help private businesses and to create. This, this is a great, that's a great question, I get it all the time. This is an economic development driver. This is a, a real estate dream kind of homeownership type of opportunity for people. And so we want lenders who are in the community to participate. We want Realtors that are in the community to participate, because that's how the momentum of homeownership dreams are made. And so, yeah, we want to encourage that to every extent we can. And so what my team does, I have a team of five that will work with Realtors and lenders in the community. We'll put flyers together, we'll answer calls from homebuyers. We're very active in trying to make sure that if someone indeed does qualify, they can take advantage of the program.
Okay, and then I know you mentioned in the slides that it's not a, not funded by taxpayers. So how is that funded, then?
If this is not funded by. What our firm does is, we're an investment banking firm, broker-dealer, and we access the capital markets. So if you go to try to get a loan yourself, you utilize FHA, VA, USDA. And we essentially access the capital markets to create these opportunities, these dollars through the mortgage market. And so when a loan closes, we get more and more opportunities to do it. So we put all the loans together. This is a kind of a effort from Nevada to Kansas to Wyoming to Texas, and that's how the benefit goes to the borrower. It is perpetually funded, we do not ask for any taxpayer assistance in any way, shape, or form. In fact, there will be at some time, given the program's success, individual communities can do that. So if it was desire of the, of the board, you could certainly do that. You could put your own town funds into the program and help your citizens specifically. That has been discussed with many jurisdictions that have decided to participate since it started.
Okay, and then there was a note, I believe it's on page 21 of our packet, talking about how this state, county, or county and city of Denver's not liable for costs that we potentially would incur. What potential costs are being discussed there?
Yeah, that's, I wish I was a trained lawyer, I can't really help you there. There are no costs that we pass on to the participants in any way, shape, or form. The City and County of Denver absorbed all the costs to start the program. They incur the legal costs to make sure that the program operates according to the laws. And so there are, not to my knowledge, since we were hired on the program, any, any costs whatsoever that were passed on to participating jurisdictions.
Okay, and then the final question that I had was, there was a portion in there talking about homebuyer education, and I didn't know if that was something that is a required, if they're going to go through the program, or what does that entail?
Yes, sir, that, that's a good question. We do require homebuyer education, that is the, one of the few overlays, if you will, of requirements that the program does have. We've just found that when that is involved, it's beneficial to the homebuyers. They seem to understand the process a little bit better and the, and the care of the home. So yes, that is a requirement of the program. And what we do is we utilize any HUD-approved counseling agency throughout the program area can provide that homebuyer education.
What all is typically included in that education process?
Any and all requirements of HUD. So HUD would require, give the specifics, there's no grandstanding, if you will. HUD determines whether you're licensed to provide that education, and they make sure that the curriculum is consistent with what they approve. So it's very consistent across each and everyone here in town. So if you'd like to, I could certainly provide you a list, but the Colorado Housing Finance Authority here in town has a list on the website, and largely all of them are qualified to provide that education in this program.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all my questions, Mayor.
Good question, trustee Gator, thank you. Sir, appreciate it very much, I think it's a good program.
Thank you.
Okay, open up to the public comment for this time. If you've got any questions, this is a good time to ask.
My name's Kelly Fuchs, I live on Buckthorne Street here in Wellington. Regarding his program actually in finance, so I kind of know a little bit about it. And I think one of the great things about the program that he's offering is that it has a forgivable second, which a lot of down payment program assistants don't have. You have to pay it back if you sell the home or if you refinance. This program, it's forgivable after three years. So if you live in the house for three years, then you don't have to pay back the second mortgage, which is very beneficial for first-time homebuyers that have to worry about having that second loan. So I saw that, that was really good. And then to regarding the first-time homebuyer question, the classes go over pretty much budgeting, housing expenses, having money in the, in your bank so that you can cover any kind of repairs or anything that's required, just kind of giving you the education on how to be a homeowner.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's bring it back to the board. There's no other further comments on the issue. Let's seek a motion to approve Resolution Number 18-2020.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 18-2021, authorizing and approving Wellington's participation in the Metro Mortgage Assistance Plus Program and authorizing the execution of the delegation and participation agreement and other documents in connection therewith.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
See Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be in touch, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item three. This is a revitalization Main Street Grant Presentation, some good news, let's hear it, Kelly.
Hello, give me just a second, I will share my screen here, guys. Where it's not, can I do it for me? All right, good evening, Board of Trustees. I'm Callie Cooper, the Executive Director of the Wellington Main Street Program. And tonight, I'm here to tell you guys a little bit more about the CDOT Revitalizing Main Street Opportunity Two Grant, as well as make a finance request. A little bit of an overview of the grant itself. The town of Wellington has been awarded $149,999 through the Revitalizing Main Street Opportunity Two Grant Program. These grant funds are part of a $30 million allocation from the state of Colorado in response to COVID-19, and will be directed towards the Downtown Improvement and Pedestrian Safety Initiative. So that's what we have titled our project. This is coming, this funding is coming in the way of these smaller grants, up to $150,000, as well as some larger grants that we have also applied for. The Wellington Main Street Program and the town of Wellington will partner in purchasing and installing a series of equipment and fixtures to address pedestrian safety, accessibility, and the health of visitors and residents in Wellington. This is a reimbursement grant with a 20% match requirement. The matching fund requirement will be met with a combination of Main Street mini-grant dollars that we get annually. that we get annually from DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs and the Colorado Main Street Program, fundraising dollars specifically from our Wellarama Music Festival in August and in, in-kind services provided by the Town of Wellington. And I will talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So Project Scope. Um, so this is just a very broad overview of some of the items that will be within the grant itself. So this will include in-house engineering and design, coordination with CDOT and Excel Energy, the removal of existing lighting fixtures and downtown furniture, sidewalk repair and base preparation for the installation of new furniture and the purchase and installation of new fixtures, which may include anything on that list. Obviously, some of those are a little bit budget pending, depending on where some extra costs might come in. So here's some of our project design elements. This will include solar powered IPL Cobra pedestrian lighting. So those are between ten and twelve feet tall as well as solar powered PLB bollard lighting. And those sit about on me, about hip level. Replacement and ADA accessible picnic tables. So picnic tables that will allow for wheelchairs to go underneath them. Dual trash and recycling containers, backless ADA accessible sidewalk benches and outdoor water bottle filling stations. This is just, thank you to Nathan with our Public Works Department for doing this drawing for us. This is just, gives you an idea of the layout of where some of these items will go. And just another view of another block. And then here is our tentative project timeline. Again, broad scope, we have eight months to complete the project from when we receive our purchase order. We are anticipating that that will come in sometime this week. And so looking at a project completion date of the end of February. Here's just another view of that. This is the Gantt chart for that project timeline. Gives you a little bit of an idea of where things are crossing over. A bulk of that timeline is going to be the design phase. So taking a look at where all of those items are gonna go, especially the solar powered lighting. Obviously, we can't have any trees impeding on those lights. So we have to be very strategic on where they go. And then the equipment purchase itself. We're looking at about a ten to twelve week lead time on a lot of those items. So the project budget. The awarded grant funds, again, is that one forty-nine ninety-nine ninety-nine. Wellington, Colorado Main Street mini grant dollars is ten thousand. Town of Wellington in-kind is going to be roughly fifteen thousand. That's going to come in the way of those engineering and design services, public works hours as far as removing and installing those fixtures and furniture pieces. And then the fundraising dollars, we're looking at roughly seven thousand coming directly from the Main Street Program fundraising and with a total project budget of roughly one hundred and seventy-five thousand. So now here comes the fun part for you guys. This is the funding request. So the Town of Wellington staff would like to request approval of the hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars in reimbursable funds due to that very short timeline that we have to complete the project. The staff would like to request permission to spend those funds at their discretion so long as it meets the grant requirements and reporting through our finance department. And that's it for you guys. Thank you guys so much. This is a really exciting opportunity. This is a very large chunk of money and we're really proud of that successful grant application and what this could mean for our downtown. And I'm here for any questions.
Anyone?
I'm incredibly amazed by the efforts of collaboration within our town between nonprofits and town staff. It has been amazing to see such big opportunities be executed on in such short periods of time. Given the circumstances of these grants that are now, could become available for specific items and how we can respond so quickly to them. A lot of those efforts also lie on the shoulders of volunteers. So before we move forward or making any decisions, I do want to commend all the parties who are involved in this grant application and then who will then be further on down the road executing and managing this grant. So we are so fortunate in our town to have such dedicated servants. So I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Well, and I'm very grateful. I'm gonna give a shout out to our Public Works Department and our Planning Department because they take my wild and crazy ideas and they make them happen and they put all of the engineering into it and make it make sense. So I'm very grateful to them, to the staff at the Town of Wellington for taking my vision and making it a reality. So I'm very grateful.
Anyone else? Anything to add?
I just have a question, Kelly. You have a mini grant and fundraising dollars that the Main Streets is gonna put towards this project. Could that money be spent by Main Streets on other projects? I guess the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar total project budget, is that actually what you need? Is a hundred and seventy-five thousand? Or I guess my question, my thought process is, is because Main Streets works so hard at fundraising and trying to, you know, do so much for the community. I mean, you basically plop down a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the lap of the town to make it better. But you also have other things that, you know, that you guys attend to and try to help out with. I didn't know if if you guys just kept a hold of that seventeen thousand dollars to use elsewhere, is that necessary to be part of this budget? That's, I guess that's my big question. I mean, I would be happy to approve, you know, the town doing like, it's like more like kind if we have to, to, to make it so that you guys are able to continue with your good work. So I know that's seventeen thousand dollars out of your guys' budget is a significant amount of money, you know, in comparison. So just, that was my question. I mean, does it, could we do it with you keeping your money and spending it elsewhere or do we need it?
I think that's maybe a better question for you guys, whether the Town of Wellington and the Finance Department would make up that difference. For us, it's a good faith contribution. It's, it's just a way of us showing our support for those downtown projects. We are in the midst of a larger grant that the town will have to front. And obviously the town has to front the hundred and fifty thousand as it is a reimburse, a reimbursement grant. So I think we were attempting to alleviate the stress on town budget that's already really tight in order to make those projects happen.
In the way it's designed right here too, I think it's kind of cool to acknowledge that every dollar funneled through the Wellington Main Street Program is returned to our town through the efforts in the grant by ten. So I think that's a pretty cool acknowledgement if you were to look at it from that perspective. So I, I think that's fantastic. And that is, I mean, at the core, the mission of the, the program. So again, just so thankful for that. Given the other parts of this specific request and the short timeframe for spending these funds to ensure that we can maximize everything in our grant, I think that within this scope, we should definitely consider the reimbursement and their procurement items relating to spending this money so it doesn't have to come back through our, our meetings. If we were for any reason having to approve larger purchases in our procurement, procurement maximums, we could be adding months and months to this project and given the nature of it, needs, it has to go fast. So I'm definitely in favor of approving the recommendation as written and allowing that those funds to be spent for reimbursement as needed in whatever amount within that amount and within the scope of the project.
Anyone else?
I did have a couple of questions, Mayor.
Go ahead, Trustee Gator.
The first question I had is, I know we ran into this with the sidewalks, the crossing stuff where we had some massive delays with CDOT. Is that gonna be a concern? Because a lot of the stuff that we're doing is gonna be on Cleveland Avenue. Are we concerned that we're gonna start running into some of those same type of issues where it's gonna cause delays with CDOT?
So one of the wonderful things about this grant, Trustee Gator, is that it is a CDOT grant. So they are expediting a lot of those processes. We do have a utility permit in process already. And we have also secured all of the necessary traffic control through Carnes. So a lot of that work has already been done on the front end. So we, we are still waiting for those permits to come in. But we have that time at our advantage just because we're still waiting on that purchase order to come in. So a lot of that work has already started.
Okay, excellent. The, overall, it's great, it's great. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into that. I, I'm not real comfortable with just giving blanket approval for spending everything as whatever people want. I don't know if the plan is, is that it's gonna be spent on what's been presented or if it can be completely changed and people can decide to purchase something else. What's kind of the expectation with that?
So again, we had to do a scope of work approval for the grant itself. So we cannot go outside of the thing, the items that I presented tonight. We may not be able to purchase some of the items that were presented tonight. We may actually have to cut items out, but we will not be able to add anything to to those purchases because of the guidelines around that grant funding.
Okay. My only request then is if we're gonna do this, I don't have a problem with expediting that. I would like it reported out to us whenever funds are spent on that. So if things are purchased, even if we're not gonna force them to come back to us to get approval, I would like to have the town administrator report it, report out to us and let us know what's being spent.
Trustee Gator, it's Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. How would you feel about a wrap-up at the end, you know, explaining exactly what was purchased and, and providing that fund accounting at the end? Or would you prefer it being done as it happens?
Even just a quick update would be, yes, at the end would be great. It doesn't need to be super entailed, but just kind of, you know, as they're going through stuff to say, especially if there's big purchases, just let us know, hey, here's some of the things that are going out. Just, I think it was good just for us to know that. So I would appreciate just brief updates. It doesn't need to be long. It can be like a two minute or a minute in your, in your update, but I would like to just know what's going out.
Will do. Thank you.
Yeah, the, I mean, obviously the big thing is that some of those reimbursement funds may not come in until, we can submit receipts as we go for reimbursement, but some of them may not come in until after the end of this year. And so the town may have some additional costs up until that February completion date.
Okay, anyone else?
I have, I have a couple items and that just came up through this conversation. So as we have really, and it's been the common theme for the last few meetings, that we have on full force encouraged staff, Main Streets, everybody to pursue grants and any funding that might be available as a result of COVID or otherwise to to pursue them as much as possible, right? If there are dollars out there available, we want them for Wellington. So whether they're for downtown, whether they're for a larger project, whether for water or whatever it might be, if we're pursuing grants to do it full force. So with that said, and this is a great first example in my mind, we need to acknowledge then how we're then trading those grants following that and the ease in managing them, the ease of executing them. Getting them is one thing, but fulfilling them is another. So we're talking about one exception for this specific grant, but this does open up a bigger question of, this is a hundred and fifty. What happens when we get our two million dollar grant? That's going to add administrative time and expense, not to mention the actual work associated with those wonderful funds. So I just want to put this out there right now because it's going to be a major consideration. If we're seeking those funds, we have to know how to use them without creating additional tasks for each staff member on top of their already busy jobs. So we talked about the actual spending now, but the reporting out on them and those kind of things, even though in our meeting might only take thirty seconds to say what those were, gathering all those expenses and the reimbursement amounts and the statuses on that is not a two-minute process. So we just need to be very cognizant of that. If our focus, and in my mind it is, in gathering as many free dollars that are available to beautify or otherwise improve the livelihood for our residents, we gotta make it manageable without risking our staff and their and, and making sure that everybody can fulfill a grant. So we're actually doing what we say we do when we get those grants. So I just want to put that out there because this is just the first example and I already see a lot of extra work. And if we're gonna just keep bringing in and seeking all these dollars, there's gonna be more and more and more and more. So whether someone is available to manage that, new staffing, there's so many different directions we need to consider, but I want to make sure that that's on everybody's mind. And from the town perspective of if we're telling everybody to get as many dollars as, as we can, how we're going to manage that and make it work successfully for the town.
Is that on your mind?
Mayor Hammond, can I ask a couple of quick questions to Kelly? Because actually this might help answer some of those questions. So when you were applying for the grant, generally you have to put down who's gonna be managing or administering the grant. Will the Town of Wellington be responsible for that or will you, or will Main Street be responsible for administering the grant? So right now I am listed as the individual who will be acting as the liaison with CDOT and their representatives. However, we do have Alex with the Public Works Department. He is also listed on there as a key contact just from the engineering side. Sure. Obviously, there are things that I cannot do that the Public Works Department is much better at. So, but I am that contact. As far as the finances, we did have a meet, our Board President Anita Hardy, myself, Patty Garcia, Judith Tippett and Bob Gowing all met together to discuss how the financing would work. We have a separate account set up specifically to show funds coming in and out as far as this grant is, is concerned.
Well, and direct reimbursement grants generally require an invoice or a quote from the manufacturer justifying the pre-approved expense. So they've already ran these expenses through CDOT. And I'm sorry, I apologized. Is CDOT distributing the funds or is DOLA distributing the funds?
This is coming from CDOT.
Okay. So is like the portal system, are they doing it like, are you reporting it like directly to CDOT or?
Yes. So we will, so they have given us like a spreadsheet that we will be able to fill out every time we incur expenses. And we will fill that out, send it, send it to them and then they will reimburse the Town of Wellington.
Okay.
Based on.
Great. So generally they do that in monthly or quarterly chunks depending on.
Anita, do you remember? I think it was monthly.
Monthly, okay.
Anita Hardy, Main Streets. We don't have to wait to submit those invoices on a monthly basis. If we have one every week, we could submit and then they immediately start processing those. So I think that's also a benefit on this reimbursement grant program that it's
Real time?
We have, yeah.
Like, and it's reporting kind of?
Right.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So additionally, I wanted to know that this project supports several of our goals in our twenty-twenty-one strategic plan that we set out for ourselves. So I commend you and Main Street for acknowledging and partnering with those goals to try and help us accomplish those. So I, I too as well would love to support Main Street however we can for this program.
Well, and fingers crossed for us, we are kind of using this smaller grant fund as a template for getting the larger funding. So if that does come through, that we have the process in place to address the larger grant.
And I'm sorry, one last question.
If and when we get it.
You did say that there was like, so the in-kind labor. So does a grant reimburse the staff labor for the installation of the equipment or is that the in-kind that we're doing?
That's the in-kind match that we're providing. So those will be in staff hour, you know, paid staff hours that will be logged through the Public Works Department.
Sure.
But then we'll be able to show that as that twenty percent match.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Anyone else?
So John, to answer your earlier question, the Main Street Board approved that those fundraising dollars if and when they are needed. So it is possible that we'll be able to cover that, those matching funds without having to use any fundraising dollars. We just have made them available if they are needed.
Gotcha. Okay, two final questions. Sidewalk repair, we're going to deal with our sidewalks in this thing. Is that what we're going to do? We're going to deal with some of these busted up areas where you walk around the corner and you see some of it missing, you know, at the ADA?
So that is our hope for the larger infrastructure grant project.
Oh, that's the 2 million?
That's the 2 million.
Okay.
Well, the good news is, is that once we're successful with applying and receiving grants, you start to become more and more successful.
I agree, I agree. I got it.
This is great. And town staff and Anita Hardy specifically put six very long weeks into applying for that larger grant. So fingers crossed.
Okay. You did very well. Keep it up. Anyone else? Any final things? They want to turn it over to the public? You good?
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you for your help. We look forward to seeing it. Public comment? Anything at this time? Let's bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion to approve the, seek a motion to approve this? I don't see my motion here.
I move that we approve the $149,999 and reimbursable grant funds for the C dot revitalizing Main Street Opportunity Two Grant Project. And additionally, recommend that the staff have the authority to administratively approve invoices up to $149,999 for this project.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, moving on. Item four. We're going to authorize, this is to authorize execution of two construction contracts for the 2021 Old Town Streets Repair Project ongoing. Nathan?
Ewer. Bob Gowing, Public Works Director. Before I throw Nathan up here, I was thinking I might introduce him. Nathan's been on board for a few months now, professional engineer with design and project management experience. He's been working on these two projects you're about to hear about. Was instrumental in the Main Street. Thanks for that shout out, Kelly. And is helping on several other projects as well as getting his arms around our GIS. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Nathan.
Thanks, Bob. All right. First time I got two things, right? All right. So tonight we have the authorization for the execution of the 2021 Old Town Streets Repair Project. Staff solicited bids from qualified contractors to complete the work for four separate contracts. We have an asphalt repair contract. We have a concrete repair contract, materials testing, and then tree removal. The location for the work being performed under this contract can be seen on sheet 52 of the board package. We have six locations scattered around the town, specifically in the Old Town area. As in past years, work being performed includes street mill and overlay, sidewalk repair replacement, curb gutter replacement, ADA ramp upgrades, and fire hydrant replacement. We received two bids for the concrete work and four bids for the asphalt repair work. Bid summary was included on the board package on page 60. All bids were evaluated for completeness and qualifications. On the asphalt contract, both companies had previously performed the work under this contract in previous years. We had no issues with either one of their performance. So the selection was based solely on low bid. In this case, it was Connell, Connell, Connell Resources. On the concrete contract, previous contracts again were performed by the two low bids. So again, we've selected North Star Concrete solely based on low bid for this contract. Both bids for the asphalt and the concrete work came in under budget. So we went ahead and included the ad alternate work with this contract that you'd be authorizing tonight. As I mentioned, the additional contracts that were within our budgetary ability to approve are for C T L Thompson on the materials testing. And the low bid for the was Tree Top for the tree removal contract. With that, are there any questions?
What's your ad alternate, what's it going to be?
It's, it's those six locations. Originally, it was, it was going to be the three larger locations where it's full mill and overlay of, of a block a piece. And then we had three additional locations. I believe the ad alternate was between second and, or sorry, fourth and third on Harrison, and then there was some gutter pan replacements that were included.
Any questions?
Just had a question. On Tree Top, I noticed that there was not any additional bids. There was just the one bid. Was that the only company that bid for that or?
The issue we have with that is when we solicit bids from Fort Collins companies, typically they either don't provide bids or their timeline isn't conducive with, with our project's timeline. So we're essentially left with one, one bid for that. And I understand that the requirement is for at least two bids, I believe, at that price. And so we, the way we've handled that is just documented that in a sole source letter. But we did, we did place calls to Fort Collins companies and essentially received no response that was going to work for the project.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Bless you. It wasn't a sneeze. Nothing else? Let's open it up to the public for a quick comment. Anyone? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Hearing no further comments, I'd like to seek a motion to approve the two construction contracts for the Old Town Streets Repair 2021.
Moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Look forward to it.
Okay, next item five, authorization to authorize the execution of a 2021 Stormwater Master Plan Contract. Something we've been looking for for a while. Nathan, you're going to do it?
Yep. Okay. Okay. So this project, the Stormwater Master Plan is a project funded through the Flood Mitigation Assistance Program grant from the Colorado Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. The grant is for a total of 150,000 with a 75-25 split for a maximum federal contribution of 112,500. And then the town contributing matching funds for a total of 37,500. Funds were budgeted for this year's 2021 budget. Brief background, the Stormwater Master Plan is going to be a comprehensive planning document that will provide a hydrologic and hydraulic analysis and model of the town and the town's growth management area. The master plan will identify existing stormwater problem areas within the town. It will also provide a blueprint for drainage design and planning within future developments outside the town's currently developed areas. The master plan will provide a list of drainage-related capital improvement projects along with budgetary level cost estimates for inclusion in the long-range CIP list. The master plan will also provide benefit cost analysis for various identified projects, which is something that is required in order to receive grant funding for construction from FEMA. Additional work carried out under the contract will be a comprehensive review of the town's existing drainage standards and criteria. Staff solicited bids for in May of this year and received seven proposals from qualified consulting teams. Proposals were evaluated and scored by the selection committee, and the top two teams were selected for interviews. We interviewed teams back in June and selected Icon Engineering for the contract for your approval tonight. At that point, I'll open it up for questions.
Any questions, board members? Trustee Gator?
Yes. So the first question I had is you mentioned that there were two finalists that were brought out. What was the cost of the contract from the other finalist? Or why did you choose to go with Icon over, because you don't have anything in here about who the other option was?
Correct. I believe, I believe their cost was right around $139,000. What, what we have is because the budget for this project is essentially public record, it's in the town's budget. Generally, all the project proposals from all the consulting teams were in the same range. Range, on the high end was 140 exactly at our budget, and then on the low end was 118,000. Typically, with this type of projects, we aren't necessarily looking for the cheapest proposal. The criteria that we evaluate the proposals, number six in my criteria list was looking at the cost proposal. What I look there is more so than just the bottom line, I'm looking at billing rates. I'm looking at the number of hours and I'm looking at the project team size. The preference is we want to try and maximize the town's dollar. So I'm looking for proposals that limit sort of administrative costs, management costs. I want to see the, the dollars going towards tasks that involve the analysis, the modeling, the report writing, the, the creating the figures, creating that finished product rather than some of the other things that may be extra that consultants will put in there from time to time. So in the end, I'm, I'm really analyzing their costs more on a quality level rather than just looking at like straight bottom dollars. So we didn't necessarily pick the lowest bid in this case, but they were all within budget.
Okay. And then what role is Logan Simpson going to be playing within this contract? Because I said, I noticed that they're a portion of that.
They are. At this point, they don't have a role. They're on, on a team, but they are not under contract. In discussions with Icon Engineering, if they were to come into the project, it would be more as a coordination with the the, the comprehensive plan side of things and the zoning side of things. But honestly, at this point, that role is going to be very minimal.
Okay, thank you. And then the only other concern that I had is there is a portion in there. Let me find the exact page, but basically it looks like we're spending about $4,000 for apparently what's going to be two different four-hour Board of Trustees meetings, it appears. So it's on page 307, I think, or 306 of the packet. There's a kind of breakout and we're basically paying for two assumed town board meetings, eight hours from the principal engineer, eight hours from project manager, and a GIS specialist. We're looking at $3,900. And I'm just curious as to what, first off, that I don't, typically our board meetings aren't four hours. But two, what exactly are they going to be presenting to us? That wouldn't be something that you or town staff could present that we would need to spend that $4,000.
This is, I mean, it's, the money's in there if, if we don't feel like we need it. Obviously, it's, it's at our discretion to move it around within that task, within the overall project budget. I think we more or less left it in there as a placeholder. If that's something that we felt like we would need.
Why wouldn't we have them come and report on what's going on? When, isn't that what that's for?
Yeah. I mean, I, the idea was to present at the end and then at some interval in the draft. Correct. And I would assume the bulk of that hours, you're right, the, the meetings aren't eight hours, but there will be some preparation time on their part to prepare for those meetings.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Yeah. I mean, if we were spending this much money on a, a master plan, I would expect a highly professional and executed type presentation for those dollars spent to make sure that we're getting exactly what we're looking for. So I understand that there's going to be presentation costs. And I, and we've seen that with our other plans where they come or attend our meetings. It's probably, I would hope that in the past, when they're doing it online, maybe we've seen some savings associated with that. Well, and sometimes it's not always about the bottom line. Sometimes you pay for what you get relative to that stuff. So I'm curious, what other criteria did you use for your selection process? You knew I would ask that, didn't you?
Brought it with me. So selection process, I looked at, we looked at proposal quality. Typos? I don't like typos. If you got typos in your proposal, your finished product probably won't be that good, honestly. Project team and experience was pretty high up on our list. We want to make sure we're selecting a consultant that had experience in the area and then also working specifically with sort of a smaller town such as Wellington. Mile High Flood Control District does things very differently than we do. Fort Collins does things very differently than we do. So we wanted to see some experience relative to what Wellington is like. Location of the firm, key personnel. Again, I saw resumes from people in Arizona. Preference was given towards Colorado-based teams. Approach and methodology. We wanted to see a solid, detailed approach, a good grasp of the project based off of discussions with myself during the proposal phase or what was presented within the RFP that I wrote was very important. Work plan, project schedule is included. Obviously, with the schedule, the, the grant has a timeline, expires April 2023. So everything's got to be done by then. So that was important. And then lastly, the, the fee. But as I mentioned, kind of everyone knew what our budget was. So it's more about looking at what you're getting for your money as far as.
Value of services.
Exactly. Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Let's turn it over to the public then. Any comment on the master plan that we've been working towards here for a couple of years now? All right, we'll bring it back to the board. If I hear no further comments, can we get a motion to authorize the execution of the 2021 Master Plan Contract? Stormwater Master Plan Contract.
I move that we approve the contract for Icon Engineering for the 2021 Stormwater Master Plan Project in the amount not to exceed $139,815.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, look forward to getting that done. Thank you, sir. Good job. Okay, next, item six. This is a resolution number 19-2021. It's a resolution approving the fourth amended intergovernmental agreement for the establishment of Laramie County Telephone Authority, LITA 911. Dan?
Excuse me, I apologize for not being in there in person. This is Dan Sapienza, Town Attorney. This is, as you mentioned, the fourth amended intergovernmental agreement for LITA 911. LITA 911, or LITA, is a coalition of various entities in Laramie County, including the county municipalities, a number of hospital and emergency services districts, fire protection districts and authorities. And this amended IGA has the three primary purposes. One is adding a number of fire protection districts to LITA so that they can participate in these discussions. There's a slight change in board membership with this IGA. The town of Estes would gave a permanent seat on the leaderboard. The reason for that is they have what's called a P S A. It's a public safety answering point, which is basically the 911 call center. And the board gives those, or those organizations priority and board membership. And the third real purpose of this IGA is to add to the powers of the authority or make clear what they can do. As you can imagine, with the changes in technology with 911, things for LITA change very quickly and very dramatically. They now have text 911. They deal with a lot of phone-based internet, internet-based emergency contacts. There's a lot to what they do. So this, some of the changes in this IGA are intended to help them facilitate that and work through those technological changes. So there's been a number of stakeholder meetings to discuss this with attorneys for all of the entities involved with LITA. And this resolution is needed for Wellington to sign off and on this fourth IGA. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Dan? Any questions for Dan? Pretty standard, Dan?
It is.
Are there any changes or costs or things that are associated with us signing the update?
There aren't, the funding for LITA comes from the surcharge that's on everybody's telephone bill, and that was up the up changed to seventy cents per month per phone line, so there's really no costs for the town of Wellington on this. And no real big changes for us with this I G A either, so this doesn't go off.
Okay. Nothing else, I'll turn it over to the public for a moment. Any comment on this? This item here? Probably not, okay, we'll bring it back to the board. If there's no other questions or no other comments, can I seek a motion to approve? Resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty one. Approving the fourth amended integral government agreement for the Laramie Emergency Telephone Authority, LITA nine eleven.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny? Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson? Mayor Hammond?
Yes, thank you, Dan. Okay, can we move on to item seven? Ordinance number zero seven dash twenty twenty one, this is an ordinance establishing a hearing process to address alleged campaign finance complaints and violations.
Crystal?
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees, Crystal Eiker, Town Clerk. On May twenty ninth, two thousand nineteen, the governor signed Senate Bill two thirty two, which amends the Colorado Campaign Finance Practices Act, and it provides that complaints related to municipal campaign finance are handled by the municipal clerk. Prior to this change, municipal clerks would rely on the Colorado Secretary of State to um process any campaign finance complaints. So due to this change, staff is presenting an amendment to the municipal code to provide a process for handling these complaints in the future. The town is unaware of any campaign finances finance complaints that have been filed in the past, but we would like to have a process in place should any arise in the future. In researching other municipalities throughout the state and the Secretary of State States Campaign Finance Practices Act, we um kind of put some took some different pieces throughout those municipalities and the Secretary of State's office to draft the ordinance of two thousand or oh seven, two thousand twenty one. And the complaint process is really similar to what the Secretary of State uses. So I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions for this change? Board members?
The only question I have is, would it be wise of us to to set out ahead of time who the hearing officer is, because I know it's something the Board of Trustees determines, but one of the concerns is that just give forgive the example, give the example of, you know, let's say there's an election in April, someone files a camp complaint while there's the new Board of Trustees. There might be considered a conflict if one of the members who's of the complaint is helping to set the uh hearing officer, so can we set that ahead of time, or does that have to wait until the moment to set who the hearing officer is?
I would actually refer that question to Mr. Sapienza if he has a recommendation on that.
I think that's actually a very good idea, Trustee Gator, to appoint somebody in advance, so that so that we know. And I think the way this is drafted, that hearing officer could also be um you know, a municipal clerk, excuse me, a municipal judge would perhaps be a a suitable choice for that, she did some some of the hearings related to the marijuana ordinance and other things, so I think that'd be a that'd be a good idea. If this ordinance is passed, I'd be happy to to have that conversation with her, or at least start that conversation and we can appoint her.
Yeah, that was my only thought, I think it's great to have it local, I just think it would save us from potential future appearance of conflict if we can set out that hearing officer well in advance of there being any issues, because I know that I think it just prepares us ahead of time, other than that, it looks good.
Anyone else for the comments?
I I disagree with uh Trustee Gator about, we should probably just go ahead and after we approve this ordinance, have the town attorney talk with the the municipal judge to see if she to be agreeable to that if or when that time would arise that we would need her services, that she would agree to be the hearing judge for any cases that may come forward. That way, if something happens, everything is in writing, procedure set up. It just moves forward and just go.
Any thoughts on that? As is, move forward or?
So uh. I'm I'm trying to, you're suggesting we don't appoint the judge as the at this time or?
I think we probably should consult with her first to make sure that she's comfortable with being that, because I believe that's what was done prior to her being appointed as the person last time was she was asked if she felt comfortable or had, you know. So I think it would be just, you know, prudent for um the town attorney, you know, once we approve this ordinance to come, you know, visit with her to see if she's okay with it, and then we can, you know, in a very soon meeting, go ahead and appoint her, you know, or whatever we whatever needs to be done to if we need to do a change to this ordinance or whatever needs to be done, but I think that would be the best course of action is just make sure, you know, I'd hate to appoint somebody to do a job that they don't really want to do.
No, I thank you for clarifying that, uh, Trustee Jerome, and I think that is a good course of action as well.
Sometime between now and when campaigns could be occurring.
Uh, this is Dan, I can I can talk to her immediately after this meeting um so that we can have that lined up and can bring bring a resolution back or a motion back with a proposed hearing officer very soon after this.
And then also protect us if she were not to be available for some reason, what what would be an option? I don't have any other comments.
Mr. Sapienza, would we be identifying this person by name or by title and position and or position, I guess is better? I I guess my recommendation would be is if we're appointing the town judge that we say it's the judge and not by name in the event that the something happens. Yeah.
And and I that we could do a by title, because there are also alternate municipal judges that serve um for various reasons at various times, so we could do by by title, but I'd still like to talk with her first.
Thank you.
Okay, no one else? Any public comment on this issue? Okay, bring it back to the board, I have no other comments, can I get a motion to approve the ordinance number zero seven dash twenty twenty one, establishing a hearing process to address alleged campaign finance complaints and violations with the uh.
So moved.
Second. Trustee Gator?
Yes.
See Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald? Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item eight, consideration of invoice that was not included in the twenty twenty one budget. Town Administrator?
This will be a short one for you, um just based on our procurement policy, um invoices, anything over ten thousand? Anything over ten thousand dollars that was not appropriated or budgeted for that year needs to come before the Board of Trustees for approval. So just as a little bit of background, there were two projects that were completed. Two twenty twenty projects that were completed in twenty twenty one, um projects that we anticipated to be completed and were not for a variety of reasons, basically due to COVID, needing to get supplies and materials and things like that, and they just didn't come in time. One of those projects was the emergency power for the main plant. We budgeted three hundred and two thousand dollars, invoices paid were two hundred and eighty, and we rolled that balance over into the twenty twenty one water fund. And so the invoices to be paid on that that are brought forward in twenty twenty one were thirteen thousand dollars. The other one was the crosswalk safety project, the twenty twenty budget, it was seventy seventy five thousand dollars, we paid out forty four thousand dollars in twenty twenty and rolled over the balance into the twenty twenty one street fund. And there were invoices to be paid of thirty eight hundred dollars. So the procurement policy states that a board approval is required for non-budgeted items over ten thousand dollars. Invoices under ten thousand related to the twenty twenty projects, um I paid, I was authorized to pay, and I went on ahead and paid those for the crosswalk safety project and one for the emergency power for the main plant. The one I'm looking for approval from the trustees is um based on the emergency power for the main plant and to interstate construction services, and it's for the twenty twenty backup generators, manual transfer and installation. So there is money in the water fund to pay that, and I'm just looking for approval of the twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty four dollars and seventy cents.
Any comments on that, Board members? Trustee Gator?
No, I think that's good, just to clarify, we came in fairly significantly under budget, are there still outstanding invoices that will be coming in, or are we done with those projects?
We are done with that project, both projects.
Excellent, great job.
Good, nice job, okay, public comment on this issue? Nope, bring it back to the board, there's no comment to hear, can I get a motion to prove the consideration of the invoices not included in the twenty twenty one budget? I believe it's twelve thousand seven eighty four.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes.
Okay. Number nine. This is a resolution twenty dash twenty one. Resolution adopting the twenty twenty one Laramie County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, Update.
You're not going to read us all two hundred and sixty pages, are you tonight?
I printed that thing out, it was.
Yeah, it's a book.
It's unbelievable, Bob Gowing, Public Works Director. Crystal, do you want me to share my screen or do you want me to present off of here? Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties. There we go. Do you need to promote me to that or? Seeing it on my screen. Okay, sorry about that. So um the Laramie County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. The um hazard mitigation plan. Well, first a little background, so we, every five years or so, the county's hazard mitigation plan gets updated in accordance with FEMA requirements. And they allow, they kind of give local jurisdictions the chance to participate in that and adopt that. Adoption of an H M P is required to receive FEMA funding. The fact that we were in the two thousand sixteen mitigation plan allowed us to apply for the flood mitigation assistance grant that we received earlier this year, that's going to pay two hundred, a hundred and twelve point five thousand dollars to uh to the town to to finish that project, right? So it's an important thing for us to do, so the background in general. Well, let me back up a little bit, so in the current plan, there were two actions called for for the town, one was a tornado warning system, and the other was a stormwater project, which we call locally the North Old Town Drainage Improvement Project. That project was completed uh in in two thousand seventeen. The tornado warning system was deferred. So um in on December first, two thousand eighteen, Mayor Hammond sent a letter to the to the county indicating our statement of intent to participate. That was a good job, and January of last year, bad date there, Laramie County initiated that update, it's a very intensive process with many participants, which we'll cover here in a second. Really throughout last year, we participated at selected points in that process, the creation process. Very little feedback from the town is required, but some some important parts of that um that plan relate to us. In May, or I'm sorry, February of twenty twenty one, Laramie County published the draft Hazard Mitigation Plan for public comment, very limited comments on that. In May, they sent that draft to FEMA for review, and in July, participating um communities are adopting that, including Laramie County. So what is a hazard mitigation plan? Hazard mitigation is loosely defined as sustained action taken to reduce or eliminate long term risk to human life and property from natural hazards such as a few of these in here that that apply to us, dam inundation that really shouldn't be termed dam failure, this would potentially relate to the B dams, earthquake, floods, rocks, I slide landslide, rainstorms, tornadoes, volfires and winter storms. The, in general, a hazard mitigation plan includes the risk assessment for those various natural hazards, a capability assessment of the communities to respond to those hazards and to mitigate for those hazards, an actual mitigation strategy and a plan implementation and maintenance section. The plan is intended to be kind of a dynamic document and requires um updates on a on a regular basis. Again, every five years, they have kind of a major overhaul, a major update like the one we're experiencing right now. What a H M P is not, it's not a regulatory document. It doesn't um doesn't create any new regulations. It doesn't require us to create any regulations or regulate in any way. It's not a set in stone commitment of resources or activities to achieve the um the general goals or action items that are listed in the H M P, so there's no actual requirement that you get it done. It's it's more of a guiding document. But again, it does enable you to pursue FEMA funding and grants. FEMA encourages communities to be ambitious, but they understand that the community's ability to complete some of those items are dependent on the resources, availability of resources, staffing and funding and things of that sort, and there's no repercussions for not completing the elements of the plan. The participating communities in this particular plan, again, this was led by and really they they did all most of the heavy lifting on this, Laramie County. Municipalities, you see the list there, a fairly large list, and there we are as participants. Many fire authorities, including the Wellington Fire Protection Authority, is a participant in this plan and other agencies, you see there, Northern Water is in is in this plan, and it's various utility districts and other groups of that sort. So the H M P, as we talked about later, is a a huge document, but they handle the the individual participating community uh community participation through what they call an annex. And it was annex T, which is Wellington's annex that was actually included in the packet. And that has language which we discussed earlier and and a specific to us for action items that we would propose to pursue during the five year lifespan of this H. for action items that we would propose to pursue during the five-year lifespan of this HMP. That would be the tornado warning system that we had deferred several years ago. A source water protection plan for our raw water supply, a stormwater master plan, which we already have underway, and the remaining steps required to for the B dams. And you guys will recall that the extensive improvements that were originally envisioned, the thirty million or so, those went away as a result of some of the work that we did with the State Engineers Office. But we do still have a requirement for an emergency response plan and a flood early warning system for the B dams. Those will also be a joint effort between Wellington, Laramie County, Fort Collins, Tenmouth. And so this by we would already be able to pursue grant funds for that, but by specifically mentioning it, you kind of highlight that potential project for that, for that funding. So with that, any questions?
Any questions?
I just had one question since you brought up the B dams response and warning system. What's and you mentioned there's a series of participants in that. And I know what the original cost we looked at for the B dams was in tens of millions of dollars. What do you think Wellington's on the hook for with all these other communities to put?
Yeah, there's been a lot of work spent on that. We unfortunately are right downstream of three of these B dams. And if the dam fails, and I think I've shown you guys those graphics in the past, it inundates roughly eighty-five percent of the town. Almost the entire town gets damaged by a dam breach event. So when you look at it in terms of risk and assign that risk to its owner in terms of those participants, we do end up with more than the average share for that. Those numbers haven't really been finalized yet, but it could be on the order of of half or so of the total cost for those. And again, that analysis was based on just strictly on assessing the risk created to the various participants in that effort. And it's hard to argue with that.
So so do you have a ballpark for what the total cost of the project is if you said that?
Yeah, we've that's actually in the five-year plan right now. We put that a number in there. I think we're looking on the order of for our participation, a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars, which seems like a big improvement over thirty million.
I thought thirty million was just one for one. Yeah, that was not necessarily the whole.
Well, and those were two thousand sixteen dollars, so.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Gator, got anything? Okay, Bob, real quick. So this is to get some plans going, right? I mean, this is what this is going to do. We don't have any.
This this enables us to pursue FEMA funding.
To get these plans going, right?
For these plans, yes, for these particular things, so.
Tornado plan and all that kind of thing, or get it in place.
Yes, we did put a medium priority on that one. It seems like the latter three of those, they felt like the higher priorities to us.
You think it's take five years to get all that put together?
No.
No, okay, all right.
You're not going to ask me for a date, are you? Thank you.
Daytime, minute, seconds, please.
Not not this Friday.
And by having this plan in place as well, it also opens up, the plan can be leveraged for other funding opportunities as well. So by saying that we're participating in a hazard mitigation program of some kind and then having the justification behind it to back it up when public safety dollars do come available through other grants or other nonprofit opportunities, having this plan in place is the plan to support that need. So great job, Bob.
Part of the requirement is is adoption of the plan, and that's what we're presenting for your consideration tonight.
All right.
I think you were very thoughtful in thinking about the hazards of the community. So thank you for putting some time and thought into that. So just, you know, a little bit more comprehensive beyond just a tornado warning system, I think speaks a lot. So thank you so much for your time.
Windmills, we need more than that, you know.
Takes a lot of time to put together the information for this plan, so I appreciate that and thank you, Bob.
Effort, and I think you were involved in it as well, right?
I did it for the fire district, so I understand.
Yeah, it's.
Got something else from Becca?
Oh, I I've met with a couple of youth in the community who specifically came with came to me with concerns for tornado warning systems.
Okay.
And so I mentioned it was part of this, and they thought it was just completely off the radar for Wellington because it's not, we're not in the highest risk area. So it was it was cool news to share that that is, you know, a plan, not the highest priority. Obviously, we have some other things going on, but it was nice to see how passionate they were about it and understanding that the town has already acknowledged that that's a need.
Well, it's when we develop that warning system and response plan for the B dams, we'll have to set up the whole process, right? So the process will be there to expand it to other types of warning systems.
That's cool. I didn't even think about that. That's awesome.
Okay, any public comment on this? Okay, I like that. Thumbs up. Bring it back to the board. If there's no other comments, can I get a motion to approve resolution twenty dash twenty twenty one adopting the twenty twenty one Laramie County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan update?
But as he put it. Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee White House.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it very much. Okay, we're going to move on to reports. That does it for action items. Town Attorney Dan, you have anything?
I do not have any updates for you. I have contacted the municipal judge about the ordinance on campaign finance complaints, and I'll hopefully have something back on that soon.
Okay. Town Administrator, anything extra?
No report.
Okay. Anything from staff? Laramie County sheriffs, they're gone. Okay. Oh, is he there? I don't think he's gonna. All right. We need to talk about the list of bills that are in this packet. Anybody got any questions? John?
I'm good on the bills. Did you see the sheriff's done?
Sheriff's still here.
Oh, okay. I just had a quick question. I'm continuing to see some of the sex offense popping up as a larger number. Is this the existing ones that have been on there for the whole year or is this three additional?
Able to answer that question, sir? Did you need to repeat it?
Sorry, Trustee Gator, I'm not familiar with the report you're looking at.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the May twenty twenty, excuse me, May twenty twenty one call call categories. And so on there, there's reported as kind of the different numbers and calls for previous years and then just the change. And then I know on there we've had three sex offense calls related for twenty twenty one, which is a pretty major jump from nothing in twenty twenty, two in twenty nineteen and none in twenty eighteen. And so I was curious, I know I've talked to Sergeant Reardon about this before. Is this the same or is this three additional for just May?
So I'm not certain exactly what those stats are coming from, but I can tell you that sex offenses come in a variety of different natures, and it can be some something as simple as someone was reported with indecent exposure as opposed to an actual sex offense itself. So I'm not sure where those numbers are coming from, but don't be initially alarmed if you want to get more into the the nuts and bolts of it, we can.
Okay, that's just that's and I don't know if there's a way to get some clarification just, I know obviously myself, I have small children, a lot of other people in this community, and if it's becoming a problem, we need to know about that. And if there's things that need to happen, then let us know. But if it's not things that are a concern to the community, that that would be good to know.
Okay, I can get some clarification on those for you.
Thank you.
Yes, please, sir. We'd like to have that. Thank you very much.
So looking at these reports and and using them in other municipalities, that's generally a year to date number and that there's the month to date, the May twenty twenty one call categories, that's the month, the monthly report, and that larger report is just the year to date. So it would be a total of three for the year. But we'll check in with Sergeant Reardon to confirm, but that's generally how those reports are set up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anything with the bills? Nothing? Board members, sorry with you.
We heard from some of our amazing partners in our community today and their huge contributions to the town and partnership there. With that said, those same organizations like Main Street Program are doing a bunch of activities around town. So I mentioned earlier when they contributed towards and what they they listed as their contribution for the grant that we discussed earlier, essentially for the the dollars that they're contributing it to for the the matching amounts. In that money that was coming from that organization through that grant, they're also looking for opportunities to then increase those dollars to pay to pay back to the community. So not only are they raising money for their for their purpose of beautifying downtown, retaining businesses and those kind of things, they're also looking on how to then make those dollars explode more through those grant opportunities. So with that said, and that appreciation that we said earlier, keep in mind, there's a lot of opportunities to support those nonprofits in our community. So, for example, right now, Main Street is doing the Main Street Markets, so weekly markets in Centennial Park. I love seeing events in Centennial Park, and they also have Wellarama approaching on August seventh, too. So I love to see the support from these nonprofits, and I love that we have the opportunity as as people who have been willing to to then support those nonprofits. So I want to make sure everybody was aware that those activities were available.
Thank you, Trustee Kenny. Trustee, why else anything?
No, sir.
Jerome, that's McDonald, Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm good, thank you.
Trustee Gator, anything you want to say?
Quick comment. I know Trustee Kenny and I had the opportunity to attend the Laramie County Elected Officials BBQ. I believe it was two weeks ago. I don't even remember. This last couple of weeks has been a little crazy. But that was a really great opportunity just to kind of meet some of the other members of our local communities. But I know the county commissioners just briefly had said they'd like to go back to doing something. I don't remember, Trustee Kenny, did they say on a quarterly basis they wanted to meet? Or monthly? I don't remember what they said.
Yeah, they said, I I think they were talking about quarterly and not only that, but rotating municipalities so that we would get to visit different municipalities, which would be really cool. We met at Horse Tooth. It was spectacular, but it would be a great opportunity to host everybody as well.
Yep. And so I was thinking I would think it'd be great for us to really have the opportunity to try and host something. I know I talked briefly with Ms. Garcia. I think maybe if we looked at first quarter of next year, we might actually be able to show off our new town hall building. Hopefully, it'll be completed by then. So I just wanted to throw that out there that if the board is open to that, I think it would be a great opportunity for us to really, one, to host the county event, really participate in that, but two, also be a great opportunity to highlight the new town hall building that we're working on, so.
Good idea. Let's get that done. We did that, what, three years ago? We had it here. Two, three years ago, first year out, we had it here, and it was a good time. It was good, good participation. Everybody came. It was great to see everyone. Okay, I did last week have the opportunity to sit down with Senator Hickinlooper and a few strategic mayors, and then that was a good visit. I don't see a whole lot of help out of the senators area, although he was, he's making his rounds, okay? He's been here before, many years ago when you were on the board then, but it was good to talk to him, and he knows Wellington. It was good, you know, we shared a lot of things about water us mayors from, you know, representing our boards from, you know, Louisville to here and, you know, it wasn't very many, but strategic mayors. But what I did get out of it, I got to talk to about our MPO, moving on, okay, because we got kind of politicked out. Last time we tried this, two years ago. Boards have changed, commissioners are gone, the Severance Mayor is not the chairman of the MPO anymore. He disappeared, the mayor there. So Will, you know, because Parsick from Berth is still the the chairman of that board, wants to get us on. We got good support there. So I feel real good about this time going back, and I I mentioned it to Patty, too, to try to get a meeting set up with the county commissioner from Laramie and from Weld County and have another lunch and just preempt it again and try to start it all over again. But I think the Greeley mayor was there. He's a pretty big shot as well, and I think we got good support. I think we can get this thing done here before, you know, maybe before the end of the year. We'll just see, or, you know, at least get big movement. So that was encouraging, not so much for the senator, but for our local mayors, you know. So that's on tape, right?
Thank you. It's really thoughtful.
Thank you, Mr. Hickinlooper. Another slap on the back I got. All right, that's all I've got. So if that's it, we're done with board reports. We have an executive session tonight. I will, you know, attempt to do this one instead of turning it over to Dan, if you don't mind. Executive session tonight is for the purpose of determining positions relative to the matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies and for negotiations and or instructing negotiators pursuant to section twenty four dash six dash four oh two four E C R S regarding negotiations with North Porter Irrigation Company. That being said, can I get a motion to move into executive session at eight thirty six?
So moved.
Okay, roll call real quick.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Present. Yes. Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee White House.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. All right, anybody need a recess quick, quick, ten minutes.
I have some documents. I'm always a little nervous about sending.
How long are we on break?
For attendees that are on the meeting, if you could please remove yourselves, this is going to be an executive session.
How long of a break are we taking, Crystal?